It's a little awkward for me to present this. This is, we're presenting the staff draft. And we have two members of the staff here. We have St. Clair Williams and Chris Caperton from the staff. There are many other staff members as well. Parks, Transportation, Environment, all those divisions have worked on this. So, the community was completed in early fall. So, the staff has now completed their work. The purpose of this is to get ready for the planning commission coming on June 14th, next week. So, number one, I want to thank everybody for coming, especially those who've worked on this for about three years, I think. It's still a lot of work, but we're getting to the end. The other purpose of this is to get everybody up to the same speed. So, I'm going to try to go through briefly through each of the chapters as we improve, so everybody can get pretty much at the same speed. I'm going to have to print these out, but this is what it looks like. Thing to be careful of is this is in two pieces. The first piece is an actual staff presentation. That's page 1 through 31. And then the actual plan is from there to page 140. So, just show sort of that square. Some people have doubts about that, including myself, actually. Uh... She'll be back. She'll be back. Uh... So, let's just proceed then. So, we are in Newtown. I like to emphasize that. We're extending the legacy of the Newtown planning since 1962. Uh... This is the first plan since 1962. Since 62, there's been a series of individual amendments. We've kind of just rolled those together over time. This is the first time we've actually taken the whole area on. And we've tried to bring it all sections up to the same level. Uh... So, it's right in front of chapters. So, for those of you that weren't around here, I'd like to show that picture up in the upper left of what was happening. This is the Parma-Bortholli Plan, if you know him, or that firm. They were a famous firm in the 40s and 50s. And they created what was called the Wedges and Corridors Plan. And you can see the red dot, that's Reston at the time. This is what Robert Simon was thinking about. This is how we ended up with the metro system that we have. It has the star shape. Uh, this is how we ended up with the freeway system that we have. This is why we have sewer, that we have the famous Dulles Interceptor that brought sewer to Reston. And the notion was that the center of town would be the South Coast Town Employment Center and residential center, and there would be a series of satellite communities throughout the region. Some people have adopted this, like Montgomery County, and this is the bible of Montgomery County. Other counties don't do it quite as consistently, but if you looked at our strategic plan here in Fairfax and squinted a little bit, that's basically what you would see. So, the yellow things are the wedges of green space, and then the white with the dots. The dots are these full-scale community centers. On the bottom left, that's the original Reston Comprehensive Plan. Uh, and there's Robert Simon. This was a big deal in the 60s. The First Lady came here. Uh, the President was interested in Reston, interested in this vision of a complete community. Equity was important from the very beginning. Uh, and there were seven principles that came out. Housing for all, that was very unique for the day, and they meant for all ages, incomes, residents to live, work, and play in the same place. This is this complete community idea. A lot of attention on the individual as the focal point of planning, as opposed to roads or some other version of public facility. Attachment to nature, accommodation leisure time. This is the whole active living recreation perspective. And amenities, starting with the library, golf courses with an S, art and more, and then, of course, Robert Simon was a developer. Financial success was important. So, now, uh... What we have in the first section are the, we do have a new set of principles, and they're a little bit different than before, more detailed primarily. Uh, we had equity and health are new. We also had more detail in just the land use passive, spelling out the difference between the corridor cities, the transit station areas, the village centers, the neighborhoods. That's all spelled out in the new principles. So, that's the first section. Now, we get into the need of the document, which are the planning elements. So, I'm going to go through all of these, these are the chapters, very briefly. So, land use and design, a lot of time spent on that. This is, uh... Very much from the last document. What's added to this, those numbers, those are the full area ratios for each of the areas. Oh, my. Does it work? Does it work? It doesn't work, so, yeah, I expect... Does it work now? No? Well, so much of that... Okay, so, this is the transit corridor. Uh, now, some people, when they talk about the comprehensive plan, they talk about the transit corridor. This plan is more than just the transit corridor. In fact, population is at least as high in the rest of the neighborhoods compared to what this will be even in the future. So, there are three areas, the transit, Wheelie, Town Center, and Urban. Remains pretty much unchanged from last time. So, we start with the Wheelie Station area. It is moving right along. Some of you are watching the various areas. That's Comstock on the upper left, EYA Midline, the upside-down building. And it's more than just the buildings that there is open space to. Also part of Comstock, sometimes we forget, is the industrial area. And so far, we're keeping the industrial area as it is. Uh, we have what's called the site-specific plan amendments. There are going to be plan amendments to try to turn some of these failing office buildings into residential. But the idea is focus the development around the orange area, the transit station, and let it taper down as you move farther back. So, now you have the Town Center Station area. That's the larger area, and you see the Fannie Mae Project, the one building in the picture pretty well finished. You've got a large civic space coming, perhaps some performing arts space. Uh, and then these are the pictures from the various, they're all works. And then, some people forget that Urban is part of this. It used to be Reston Station West, I think, was it, at one time? I think Metro didn't like our name. So, Urban Woodland, quite a lot of density there. Woodland Park has quite a lot of development that's occurred. There's wetlands there, more development coming. So, the last point here, now we're talking about the village centers. And we have four village centers, North Point, Hundred Worth, South Lakes, and Lake Anne. Lake Anne, we pretty much adopted what was done before at Lake Anne. The other village centers, we changed them slightly. And we've got that on the next slide. So, there's the 300 worth, South Lakes, North Point. Point 2-5 FAR, which is about where they are now. The new plan will allow some adjustments to that, up to the Point 2-5. If a restaurant's putting a kitchen addition on, or somebody wants to expand their store into Slate Men, or, uh, Point 2-5 will do it. Now, in this plan, we reduced the density. This is in the future for a 13 to 20 dwelling units per acre. That's about where the Lake Anne is today. Uh, and the blue is the surrounding housing that would be preserved, and there's some affordable housing in those areas. And it provides an opportunity for housing only in the red areas, but only through another comp plan amendment. So, there will be a lot of questions about that. Hopefully, that's simple and clear.
One question.
John?
Yes?
Um... Would the expansion, would there be high-rise buildings at South Lakes?
No, no. But be careful, because we're not projecting yet. We're not quite there. We're saying a potential of 13 to 20, so we didn't go much farther than that. Uh, so, at that density, you're probably not going to have high-rise buildings. Lake Anne does have one, the Aaron House 15-story, that everything is, is pretty low-rise. And again, that's a comp plan amendment, so you don't get that automatically. It gives you the opportunity to do that.
John?
Yeah?
You might share that, you're talking garden apartments.
You're talking garden apartments.
If you wanted to go high-rise, you'd be talking 50 units per acre, 18 units per acre.
Yes, that's right.
Twenty units per acre is basically a garden apartment type of configuration.
That's right, yes. And if some of you remember, when we were talking about caps, the thought was maybe you could go to 50 units per acre. This plan says, no, we're not going to do that. So, this is a change from the last plan. The last plan also lets you go free, you didn't have to do a comp plan amendment. So, this time, you would have to do a comp plan amendment. Now, there's two other, two other commercial areas. One is the convenience centers. We often forget about those. Uh, no housing in these. These are small areas. Important to Reston, to have that full range of uses. So, we have like the lake house. Not thinking of that as, as a commercial area, so that pretty much stays the way it is for our... Hold on. Hidden Creek has a small little office building there. It has a sorority school. I used to have my doctor in there, actually. I think there are other doctors in there now. Sunrise Valley, that's what you would think of as a, as a dentist, had some commercial in there. And then probably the best example is the Soapstone, but has small amounts of commercial deep in the residential areas, but no residential for those. And then the other two, golden town green, here's a lady with that, low-rise buildings along Reston Parkway. If you're coming from here, just before you get to Cameran, Bear Cameran, and then the Home Depot area. So, those would stay, the way they are, not a possibility for residential on top of that. Yes?
Um, John, I'm president of Reston Association. And one of the comments we had about lake houses, the current text, or at least the last text that we saw, had lake houses possibly being redeveloped for office. Reston Association has no intention of redeveloping lake houses for office space.
Yes.
And it would be inappropriate to have that option in the comprehensive plan. It would, um, disrupt people who spent the money to buy it to preserve it in its current state. So, I would hope that in the final draft that you adopt, that it, that that option is removed, so that I don't get any more phone calls.
So, I don't get any more phone calls? Uh, yes, we can do that, if it's not there already. We have gotten a comment from Larry Butler before. I'm not sure whether we can address that yet. Okay, is that clear? So, now, oops. Okay, now the residential areas. Like I said, there's as much residential in the rest of Reston as there ever would be in the transit corridor. Uh, as photogenic as you can get, the neighborhoods. That is really what a new town was, that kind of mix. We have a mix of even some high-rise, although that one is in the Town Center. Garden apartments, we have low-rise buildings, single-family detached and attached, in close proximity. That's unheard of in the U.S., certainly unheard of in Fairfax at the time this was developed. We weren't whole onto that. But, the last plan opened the door for at least three areas, St. John's Woods, Fairway Apartments, and Charter Oaks, with the possibility of going to 50 units per acre. First developer came in at St. John's Woods, and I think it was almost the end of the free world when that came in. Uh, so, that's coming down to, again, the 13 to 20 units per acre. The emphasis is on preserving. If we're going to go pretty good density in the transit corridor, we ought to be ratcheting down when it comes to the neighborhoods. We probably should not be proposing major redevelopment of any part of the neighborhoods. So, that's the new town invasion. You've got the transit corridor, you've got the Town Center, you've got these village centers, you've got some garden apartments mixed in, and then the single-family detached in close proximity. Uh, some planners these days don't even talk about transit corridor. They talk about the 20-minute community, that you would walk in anywhere in 20 minutes. Yes?
You mentioned the Fairway.
Yes.
It's pretty much very...
No. Well, this plan recommends 13 to 20. Yeah. So, that's pretty much it for land use. Let me check to see if there are some comments. Uh... I think this notion of placemaking, and that's something I like to talk about, deserves more attention. So, there's a whole section, and some of this is probably well-done from the last plan, just carried forward. This placemaking emphasis on design is part of this land use in the current chapter. Yes?
You didn't mention anything about the golf courses.
I didn't, and I'll get to that later. That's in the parks, recreation, open space. But, just so you know, the golf courses will be what they are today, golf courses. The language is a little different than this. Words like could, should, maybe, those are, we've kind of weaned ourselves on those mostly. Still in there a little bit, but we use active verbs. So, provide, create, establish, those kinds of words. And the result of that is shorting this from 186 pages to 188 pages. It's still a lot, but when you do it that way, you can find things, and it is, it's sad what you need, which is island number. Okay, let's go on. So, now the transportation. We have a very robust transportation section. I won't go through all the details on the transportation plan. We have new streets, two new crossings of the toll road. We have a little bit of widening of Wheelie and Reston Parkway. We have a lot of attention on the bikes and pedestrians, particularly getting pedestrians across the toll road. Completing the trail system that we have is the focus of that. And let's see. And then we have the famous Greta Streets. Uh, the Greta Streets is tampered down a little bit. We have a chance to pay more attention to the topography, so we'd have to change the Greta Streets a little bit. Uh, mostly, we change pretty much the way it is. We have a couple areas that we're already getting, beginning to have testimony on. One is the connection to North Shore Drive that goes on American Dreamway, and the other is resolving the connection, the type of connection through Association Drive. So, the left is Association Drive, probably a little hard to see on the right at North Shore. I anticipate some testimony on that during the public hearing. Uh... My favorite thing to talk about is a concern, not so much what the plan says, whether it's this or that way, but the implementation of it. And I think we're challenged here in Reston. We spent $6.3 billion to build the metro, but it's very difficult to walk there. We have nine little lame roads to cross, we have seven lame roads to cross. We've got some lights, maybe not enough. We have lack of sidewalks in the right place. So, there's a whole attention, and a lot of this is carried over from the last plan, but getting to Metro and completing the bike and particularly the trail system that we already have is all in this plan. Uh, so, there's great placemaking emphasis. Okay.
So, which are the two streets being removed?
What's that? I wasn't sure. I heard you.
Which are the two streets being removed?
I didn't hear that.
Which are the two streets being removed?
The streets being removed?
Yeah.
I'm not sure that's better. It's a little small.
Right.
Uh, one street that's removed is called the Street to Nowhere, that goes through the golf course. That is gone. Uh... In its place, is a little more emphasis on Wheelie. Uh, and then this new road connection that goes from American Dreamway, do you know where that is? American Office and Plaza America. And it's a connection using American Dreamway to North Shore. So, there's great discussion about whether that's a good idea. Those on the pro side think, well, that's, that helps the circulation for the whole area. Those on the negative side think that's an imposition on the neighborhood. We don't really want to bring that kind of traffic through North Shore and other parts of Reston. Association Drive, which is the left, probably hard to see from there. There's a lot of topography in there, a lot of trees in there. What is the best way to treat that for the future? There is another one of these SSPA's site-specific plan amendments coming, so if we can't resolve it here, that will resolve it. But that, I'm just trying to confront with the testimony that I'm getting so far. Yes?
Uh, I've heard in Polo Fields, the southwest of the Forest County Parkway and Sunrise Valley. I can't believe we talked through those slides, and not once mentioned that the company was building a grade-separated interchange at that location, which is probably going to require demolition of some of our neighborhood's homes. So, I've looked at the document fairly quickly. The words in there are so generic, that it's like, GSI, as I even mentioned, it says, context-sensitive and considerate of nearby residents. Now, come on, if you're going to destroy people's homes, you're not going to mention that?
Did you want to answer that? Okay.
I brought my notes on that, because I'm clearly aware how sensitive that is. My name's John Moody, and I was, oops. I'm wearing this because I have eye surgery, but, oops. I do have cooties prepared everywhere. So, um, that was very hard thought, hard discussed. And I listened to the Polo Fields community in great detail many times, and trying to work out the best possible change we could have in the previous conference of planning plan. What's in this language is a much stronger community process than there had been before, much stronger. A promise that Fairfax County staff will be engaged at every step of the planning process to see if there are alternatives. And by the way, no money is going to be spent on that intersection until 2038. So, we have time to work and find alternatives. That's one thing. We've got a strong community process in there. It may seem vague to you, but those words were very, were hammered out with great dialogue in that report. And the final thing I would say is that this is not just that intersection. This is really part of the whole corridor, all the way from I-95, from I-95. It's the whole sweep of the Fairfax County Parkway and the Springfield, what's the rest of it, the Springfield Parkway, all the way from I-95. And it's, it is, that has been part of the county's plan for a long time. It didn't start, it didn't start with this one intersection. And it's driven by all of the traffic, not just in Fairfax County, not certainly, not only Reston, not only Fairfax County, but the region. The only solution to it is for, so, we have time. We have until 1938. For 20, 2038, we have till 2038 to try to find an alternative. I think the alternative has to be careful, careful care that we not allow overdevelopment, and also care that we do as much as possible to become truly multimodal, that is, not depend on cars. That's the only way to prevent that. But, but this, this is nothing, this is not just about that beloved Innes intersection and the beloved Polo Fields community. I really understand their concerns. I've talked with them individually, part and part of that. But that's the problem. It is this part of the whole corridor, I-95, all the way up through Route 7, where it means outside of Reston.
Just a very quick question. Where is it in the process? They haven't started the planning documents yet. It's just on the list, there's no environmental documentation done or anything yet?
Nothing.
Okay.
They've spent no, they've spent none of the money. There's, there's a, there's a big spreadsheet for the next 40 years on transportation, and we've spent none of the money on that spreadsheet, weather engineering, certainly not construction. So, there's time, but it really, in a sense, depends on us, how much we're really willing to work to make this a multimodal community. Otherwise, the structure to have more and more roads is going to continue.
Sir? Sir?
John?
John?
What was the intersection again? I never could hear.
It's at the intersection of Sunrise Valley and Fairfax County Parkway. But actually, it's a stretch that goes all the way up to Sunset Hill.
All the way across.
Yeah. And it's really that whole corridor, all sorts of, a number of, they call them grade-separated intersections, so that people don't have to stop to go through an intersection. And it's all because of increased traffic. And the only way that will change is we become multimodal. Yes, ma'am?
So, Association Drive was mentioned?
I forgot to wear my hearing aids. Please.
Association Drive, whoa.
Association Drive, is that the one that will connect to a Substone Flyover?
Yes.
And what, what is the status of that?
It, it's on the Greta Streets, which means it has not been laid out officially, and it's still, you can even see that map, there's a couple different options of what to do with that. But yes, it's to connect to Substone Drive. And the other way too, towards the Wheelie Metro Station.
So, if, if people will be crossing Lumberburg, aren't we going to have a similar amount of traffic that's on Sunset Hills already, right? How is that solved?
What's that? I didn't hear all of that.
It not, Fairfax County DOT honestly said that widening this corridor from the southeast of the county to the northwest of the county, it will, it will help, but it will also, to some extent, increase traffic. They admitted that honestly, which I really admire. So, if you build it, they will come. And, and so, the only way to solve this barrier is to really become truly multimodal.
When people comment, would you please repeat your question to the microphone that's out here?
Sure. Yes, yes. So, I heard a lot of comment about the Polo Fields and Reston Parkway. I recently went to a presentation on, at any con...
They admitted that honestly, which I really admire. So if you build it, they will come. And so the only way to solve this problem is to really become truly multimodal.
When people comment, would you please repeat your question to the microphone that's right here?
Sure. Yes, yes. So I heard a lot of comment about the Polo Fields and Reston Parkway. I recently went to a presentation on, and any can see the presentation on the commission's website, there's lots of improvements around, none of them in Reston, they're all down in Springfield, so this one is not on the radar even short term, and it's pretty far out there. That'll never happen.
We do have a much, a much better, it may seem vague to you, but having been involved in hammering out in the details of it, it's a much stronger community process and a commitment to look at alternatives, not just how to build it, but alternatives to building it. There's a commitment in the plan on that, on the part of Fairfax County DOT.
Johnny?
Yes, ma'am. Okay.
Parks Recreation and Open Space. I mean, we had a park planned from before. I would say the last plan emphasized Recreation Fields. This plan recommends a whole host of things. So across the bottom there is the range, so of course, natural resources that we have in Reston, there are a whole lot of those, of course. Indoor facilities, the most famous ones are the Fairfax County Performing Arts Center and the Fairfax County Recreation Center. We have a whole series of signature open spaces, these are the ones that I tend to focus on. So we have three miles of open space along the W N O D Trail, so we'll be expanding the W N O D Trail as much as we can, all the way to Sunset Hills with a series of stopping points along the way. So west there, the number one feature, that's the Town Center area, so it's kind of constrained there, but as each development comes in, they do their park and gratify small open spaces next to that. Number two is the old Reston Avenue area with the Three Ponds, and they'll be, we're getting quite a bit of dedication along Sunrise Valley there. Three is the Park Overlook area, this is the area where you can see out into the golf courses. This perhaps an area of the Garden of Remembrance, some of you perhaps remember from the last plan. And then the last one is Isaac Newton Square, so that'll be a new soccer field, parking and open space created as part of that. So that's a pretty aggressive approach. Then on the left is the Town Center North, so they have the main civic space, so for all of you who want to tear down the planning commission or the board supervisors, that's the place where you would go to do that. Athletic fields, which we're struggling a little bit, how to write that, and we've recommended just go back to the past language rather than trying to create new language. There's language about equivalent to twelve fields, and I wasn't sure what that meant. Does that mean if you gotta have small ones, you'd have twenty-four instead of twelve? Or does that mean you'd have fewer? I don't know. It has not been worked out. Other parks and fields, so there's a lot of smaller ones, the, a whole variety of smaller ones. The community gathering spaces, these are the ones that Robert Simon must always talk about, the plazas and the community centers. And then the last one is the two eighteen-hole golf courses. So that's the range of parks that we would have in Reston over the next planning period.
John?
Yes?
Back here.
There.
Dan, John Farrell, President of Reston Association here. You and I have met regarding this chapter.
Yes.
And its deficiencies, which are multiple. The most important one being that the predominant overwhelming role that Reston Association plays in providing parks and recreation to the community here is either denigrated, dismissed, ignored, et cetera. For those who don't know, Reston Association owns one thousand three hundred and fifty acres of open space in this community.
And how many miles of trails?
And fifty-five miles of trails.
That's right.
And fifteen pools, and fifty-four tennis courts, and I won't keep going, but I know I could. The way the current language is written, it would suggest that the Park Authority has to approve whatever RA wants to do with his property in response to our community, and that is thoroughly inappropriate. And that language needs to be changed so that the people of Reston who elect us, seven thousand people voted in the last election, who elect us to advance their interests are clearly recognized as the responsible party for the overwhelming majority of the acres. Park Authority, for those who don't know, own less than eighty acres. And sixty of that is in Aaron Cameron District Park, which Reston Association people rarely get to use, Reston people rarely get to use. So you're talking about twenty acres fundamentally that the Park Authority uses. On one hand, burnt paths, on one hand, on the other hand, one thousand three hundred and fifty acres of Reston Association. But I have a question. In the current comprehensive plan, there's this language on page eight, forgive me for reading, but I have problems secondhand. Development within the TSAs can become better integrated into the fabric of a larger Reston community by providing future TSA residents and employees access and robust connectivity to existing community activities necessary, that's the Reston community, the RA facilities, including the lakes, all of them are by RA, the network of trails throughout Reston, all of them are maintained by RA membership. This can best be achieved through, underline, incorporation into existing Reston Association or the Reston Town Center Association. Each of these entities have indicated a willingness to include these new developments in their association. That's absolutely true. Why is this language not in the current draft of comprehensive plan? Was there a policy decision made to say, we're not going to hold this out as an objective going forward? I don't expect you to answer the question, John, because you and I have had this conversation. My question goes to the task force, and more importantly, to the staff. I don't understand the antagonism toward Reston Association demonstrated by the current draft language.
Let me start off with three things, as far as I can get. One thing you asked for, and one thing that you didn't say that you asked for is a change, when RA makes a change to their fields, right now, some folks think that that's an automatic rezoning case, which is very expensive to go through. I think we have on the work program a change to the zoning ordinance that will fix that. So that's, we're getting a little nicer to RA. The other thing is, in crafting this originally, the question was how much to involve RA in terms of, how much do you want the county regulating RA? And the decision was, let's not do that. So there's not an extensive list of all the RA facilities for improvements that they're might, and I think that's the right approach. And then that last thing that you said, I think that's going to be in the new version of this plan. I don't know what happened along the way, but that paragraph that you're talking about, I've got it right here, and I believe that's going back. Chris, is that pretty much where we're going?
It could be part of an addendum that is gonna be published.
Yeah. So remember, this is, the plan's not fixed. There are addendums coming out, there are changes that occur from people like you that are suggesting ideological changes at the planning commission. This is a chance to get your initial ideas out. So hopefully, those three things will help RA a little bit. That's why you see kind of a relaxation of trying to regulate RA in all of this.
But John, except that the language that implies that the Park Authority gets to approve RA facilities is still in that language.
Yeah, well, hopefully it's coming out. Yeah, that's my understanding. Yes? You're very talkative tonight, welcome.
To what extent will there be a requirement that new residential areas must be?
That's the fourth thing, which I didn't mention, and I'm sure John mentioned that too. There's another paragraph, and I think that's part of the paragraph that you were reading.
Yes, sir.
We cannot, the county attorney will not allow us to put in a requirement to fund RA on areas like the transit station. If I was even successful in sneaking it in there, or if St. Clair was able to sneak it in there, the county attorney would not enforce it.
Except it's also-
So we've gotta dance around with that, and hopefully, there's gonna be some follow-on, we do these follow-on motions to address that, that kind of thing.
John?
Yes?
There's already a provision in the county zoning ordinance.
Yeah.
That requires a developer of residential properties in a P district, and all of these are P districts, to spend one thousand nine hundred dollars per dwelling unit for recreational facilities. Now, the developer has two choices. One, they can build a facility in their own project, and if they do, got blessed, done. But many of them choose not to, and instead, they make a casual contribution to the Park Authority. And I have had it reported to me by representatives of developers that when they try to give some of the money to RA, the supervisor's office calls them up and says, no, you can't do that. But the zoning ordinance specifically says that those improvements can be on adjacent property. RA has adjacent property. So I don't understand the county attorney's position, it does not appear to be grounded in the zoning ordinance or in law. It appears that you've got the zoning, the county attorney, making policy, which is not their job.
Perhaps. I'm not sure what else to say.
Fix the policy.
Fix it, okay. Well, at least we have a heads up in the plan. Yes?
Yes, sir. Is there a proposed location to include the Fairfax County Rec Center?
What's that?
Is there a proposed location for the Fairfax County Rec Center?
Is there a proposal for the Fairfax County Rec Center?
No, no.
What? You see the green space in the upper part of the Reston Town Center? That is the field adjacent to the Rec Center. But yes, that's, if you look in the, in the plan now, it mentions a whole series, and I think I'm coming up to that in a second. But this RA issue is not going away.
Enter to that.
Environmental stewardship. So, is there a better picture than that? Not, I'm not talking about the photographer, but I'm talking about the place, or few places in the world, like the greatest pond, and that's a stormwater management pond, to protect Lake Anne. What's that? So, and I could go through all of them, this is not my strength, environmental section, but you have sustainable, these are the sections within the chapter. So landscapes, it's talking about vegetation, the watersheds, the water resources, stormwater management, that has probably been the most controversial part of this, the notion that we are the headwaters of difficult run here. Unfortunately, the headwaters are in the TSA, they're actually in the TSA. So we're going up on the regulations for stormwater management and for Reston. What else can I say? We already have a large wetland area in the Herndon area, there's a lot of attention on green buildings and neighborhoods. We have projects that particularly in the TSAs, we'll be keeping a couple buildings and building several new buildings around them, so existing buildings get a free ride, so to speak, so perhaps we can use this green neighborhood notion to bring the whole area up at the same time. We've heard comments about adding a little bit more on EV charging stations, I think we have that in the plan. Bird-friendly design, folks have talked about, and then sort of the green buildings. We have our first cross-tile and temperate building coming in Brookfield, and all the buildings will be, still are, or better, I think the county plans on doing better than that. So you're kind of, yeah, so really, you've kind of exhausted my expertise. Public facilities. So, we have somebody from public facilities here, good. So, obviously, the county government said, police stations already here, two to three new elementary schools, a new middle school, and a new high school. The middle school and high school won't necessarily be in Reston, but in the western part of Fairfax County. But the population growth will generate the need for that. So far, we have one elementary school targeted for North Town Center. We have our fire station, new regional library in North Town Center, expanded health and human services center, Reston Community Center, we already have that, of course, Kathy Hudgens Community Center already have that, Fairfax County Recreation Center, ninety to a hundred thousand square feet for that, a little ways off, perhaps, before we see that, expanded every record shelter, twelve full-size, full-service athletic fields, and the Fairfax County Performing Arts Center. So you have pictures of the North County Government Center, upper left, and the fire station. That picture in the middle is the swimming pool at McLean on Springfield Road, as is that basketball field. The library is in the District of Columbia, it's in southwest, it's probably one of the more interesting buildings. District Columbia has spent several years remodeling all ten of their libraries, and that's Charis Elementary School on the bottom right. So now, affordable housing. Lots of discussion about this at the board supervisors. Are we being a little too tough on the transit station area? And Glenn Manton in Welfare Outcomes Offices, looking at what we have, a lot of conservatives, Reston seems to want to talk about this equity and providing affordable housing, what's the ground truth? Do they really do it over since nineteen sixty-two? And the answer is yes. There's between twelve and seventeen percent of our housing stock is in that affordable housing range, which can range pretty high. And there, ever right, you can see what the household incomes are in Reston. So you want to try to hit that fifty to seventy-four and less incomes. We have for sale units that already fit that, we have rental, mostly in the garden apartment range, older garden apartment range, we have Fairfax County supported housing, and that's gets up as high as seventeen percent. But what are we going to do in the future as our housing increases? That little slide there shows you the range of the unit types, hopefully you can see that, that's a pretty good range, I think. Single-family detached, single-family attached townhouses, multifamily, multifamily five, eight stories, and multifamily one to four stories. So we have a lot, a pretty good range here in Reston. Let's see, those are the WDI, WDU commitments, so there's a bonus density that comes with that. So everybody gets from seventeen to twenty percent bonus in return for providing at least twelve percent affordable housing that meets the certain income tiers. Yes?
Who gets a bonus, the maximum?
Increase in density. So if you had a hundred units, you could increase by as much as twenty percent. In return for doing that, you've gotta have twelve or more percent affordable.
So this is a developer bonus?
Right, right. So, and then on the upper left, and this is from the old plan, we carried it forward in this plan, so as your density goes up from one FAR to four, your percentage goes up, affordable housing. So, you can see, we'll have a minimum of twelve percent in the TSAs, but there's a lot of areas that are in the two and a half, three, three and a half, there's some pores, so we'll be moving up on the sliding scale. So we hope overall, it's not gonna reach the seventeen percent that we have, but it's gonna be, need what we need to provide. This, I did present this to the board supervisors, but they're very concerned that we're being too tough on the transit station areas, but that's why we're doing that.
John, one of the things that came up at the Board of Supervisors Land Use Committee meeting?
Yes.
Was one or two supervisors questioning the commitment that Reston has made to multiple different housing types. And I love your bar graph, but I think it understates the commitment to diverse housing types that we have by breaking out the two multifamily categories and not showing it as a- as a tri.
Yeah.
Right. If you combine the three of them, it's more than half of the dwelling units in Reston are multifamily of one type or another. There is no other 11 anger part of this county that has a commitment even close to that. So when the supervisor from Providence District asks the question, I'd like to be able to more clearly answer the question and stop the discussion when Providence District doesn't have anything like that ratio.
Well, I like to be tactful with the board supervisors, and I also like to be straightforward. So that's what this is going for. The other aspect of that, which is the New Town Planning thing that I talked about, not only do we have that next, we have that in close proximity of each other. We have guard apartments next to single-family detached, next to even bigger single-family detached.
And that was an innovation?
Yes.
Created by Mr. Simon in 1965, and we've been living it ever since.
But there's a lot of people saying, "Well, did you really do that? Did you really show me?" So that's what this is attempting to do in a very simple way. Because not everybody, everybody knows what the story is from the beginning, but did you really walk the walk in a way? And I think we certainly did, but, yes?
The question regarding the bonus?
Yes.
That applies to transportation areas, because the new development law is hard.
It applies to out Reston, so let, let, I think it's on the next slide.
Does it apply?
Yes, so now, in the neighborhoods, we're only asking for 8%. This is for new development, to the extent that we would have new development in neighborhoods. 8%, and you get a 12% bonus. In the TSA's, it's a 12% sliding sale, and you get up to a 20% bonus. So for new only, yes.
I'm just curious, did that apply to Reston Town Center itself, to multi-story, like, uh, did I, I get five?
This, this applied, this started, these rules started around 2007. So anything before that, even in 1962, between 1962 and 2007, those rules did not apply. So this is something new. But despite all that, we still have an abundance of affordable housing here in Reston. Now, the inclusionary zoning hits developers, so anybody that appoints 50 units is to cut off. So you've got to have 50 units for this to apply. We're also, through the land use plan, preserving those existing multifamily units that are throughout. And we have for-sale as well as rental units. And one that I always keep trying to bring up is Vantage Hill, which is developed a little bit less than the 20-inch break that we talked about earlier, but they're an older guard apartment project. They haven't kept up their reserves, so they struggled with roofs, HVAC, major maintenance on their site. So they had a pool there, I guess they didn't join RA, I'm not sure what's going to get, but there was probably something went on there. The pool was abandoned, it was too much to maintain, so I, hopefully, they join RA now on it. So they're taking that pool and they're building a small amount of townhouses, and that money for the for-sale will go to the Vantage Hill Condominium Association to fund their repair work. And so that's, that's what that second does. We also, in a more lighter way, and I always bring this one up, that there's a small single-family detached neighborhood, it's near, it's between Dogwood Elementary School and USGS, they're very small lots, very small houses. It's really a vital community, lots of people running around there. Somebody wanted a daycare center, a little one, 12 kids, so we supported that. So what I'm trying to communicate, it's not necessarily about new density, sometimes it's about new facilities, a bus stop, a daycare, something like that that makes those neighborhoods stay and shape so people want to live there. So that's the second. And then the third one is new affordable housing. Got lots of developers here, maybe there could be joint ventures with some of the developers on some of these approvals to build new affordable housing. We've got major new developments at Wheely, we've got Brookfield, we've got Welston Properties, all those are large projects with, they're building out very fast in some cases. So we'll certainly hit our inclusionary zoning, but we may hit a possibility of joint venturing with the county. We're doing that in Tyson. Recently worked with affordable housing, the Arlington Partnership, building an affordable housing project that was originally just to be a market rate housing, but they decided to go with Arlington. So anyway, it's free approaches, it's the inclusionary zoning, which people like to talk about the most. It's preserving our, the houses that we had, and then third, perhaps, opportunities for new ones. Heritage resources, and I, that Reston is now old, not heritage resources, it's pretty amazing, actually, although we have some older ones. We have the church and town hall, Lake Anne Village, we have the old Holland House, and the USGS are the most famous examples. There are maps in Reston that are, spell this up in a little better detail. The ones left to talk about are the Hum Club, which is just outside Reston, and in the Association Drive area. So I don't remember if we had heritage resources in the last one, did we? Do you remember? We did. And then there's the public art. We have a little bit of that in the plan. Just personally, I think we have, we should have more representation art, so this one of Robert Simon is probably the most visited of any art piece in Reston, but we have a whole range of art pieces, and every developer of a certain size has an obligation to work with the arts community here in Reston. And a tough one, this one, we had a lot of trouble with this, particularly with the board supervisors. I think they want to do these things, but they're very concerned about us getting ahead of the things. And there are people on both sides of this, some think this is a little weak, and maybe it is. Some think that we hate, we hate, wait a minute, we're branching off into a policy that shouldn't be part, it shouldn't be part of Reston, eventually come down on high as part of the policy plan. So what we did is call the last chapter, planning and location, and what were the aspects of New Town, mostly that we wanted to care for? This equity notion, the notion, we have, we lack data, although I tried to provide a little bit of that in our affordable housing piece, and a whole host of other things, mixture of housing types, we have that. We have the multi-murder transportation system, we have, both there are competing demands for land use, distributing community facilities throughout, and then developing people that are underserved. Community health, Reston is all about active living, so any place in Fairfax or probably anywhere, we have planned a committee for active living. I was looking at the South Lakes sports outside, you saw that? We have world record holders that went to high school here. We have a whole host of other athletes in Reston, it's just amazing, that list. But it's more than just treating the, really, super athletes, but it's going across the board in the active living, through the trails, through the open space, through these signature parks that I talked about earlier. Healthy food, infrastructure, we have some here, some like more. That's all about grocery stores, but it's also about the garden plots, those things that we have. Green infrastructure and healthy buildings, we probably work a little bit better on the infrastructure. Healthy buildings, there are new standards called WELL that's not in this plan, but that's all about HVA systems, and we're learning through COVID about that, there's not much about that. And then these gathering spaces, Robert Simon was very big on the gathering spaces, particularly the plazas, that those were, that's where the community is created, because people from all walks of life gather, and then these institutions are created from that process. And then the last one, economic development, unusual to put that in a comp plan, I would say. Housing options, we have that, access to metro, we need to keep working on that. This notion of placemaking and the biophilic design, that doesn't sound like an economic development thing, but it is. These are the kind of things that people, employers, that come to Reston, they want to see that. Transportation, of course, Johnson, housing balance. And I put this last one on, apprenticeships and mentorships, we, a lot of these larger projects, we've always negotiated, it goes on. And there's lots of standards in the book, in the comp plan or in the design guidelines about that. But occasionally, you run across a person that can't do that, and it doesn't make sense to do some of those things. So we had a small hotel, actually, at Lake Fairfax Business Park, and instead, they did a green buildings, but they didn't build the grassroots, because they were going on the grassroots. So they proposed and created an apprenticeship and mentorship program coming out of the hotel for the kids that grew up here, a chance to work in the hotel business, make a little money, but get their mentorship, and who knows what they would become. So we can do some of those softer things. The county attorneys from the board supervisors kind of blanch you a little bit with those kind of things, but we've got it in the plan, and we'll see how it carries forward. And that's kind of the end of where I am. So we have the committee meeting, which is today, of course, June 6th. The Planning Commission Public Hearing is June 14th. Hopefully, you're all charged up for it. I wanted to end up on a positive note on this. We don't always end up doing that. These plans, they often take apart, a long time to create, and everybody gets kind of tired of them at the end. This is the time to be excited about, that's the reflection of what your community is going to be like. My experience has never been a perfect comp plan. I think that people go around, and they try to add a sentence here or there, and it's the complaint, "I got you," sentence, if they can just squeeze that in, I'm not talking about RA's paragraph, they try to find a sentence that will sort of make the day, and I think the time is over with too much of that. If there's something wrong, yes, let's correct it. But be careful of thinking that you could add a sentence and it would have much impact. 140 pages, but there's too much weight and too much flexibility, so keep towards the bigger, bigger picture on these things. So public hearing on June 14th, we're going to leave our, the Planning Commission almost a month before it goes to the board supervisors, so logically, there'll be some testimony at the Planning Commission, and we'll go through and record what board officials said for development. So it's basically, what chapter are you talking about? What is the comment? What's the staff reaction? And what is the planning commission's request, recommendation? So that happens between June 14th and June 28th or later, up as long as July 25th is the date for the public hearing for the board supervisors. Yes?
What's the location of the Planning Commission public hearing?
It's at the Government Center in the big, big room there. Fairfax County Government Center, yeah. Yes?
If you could bring out your crystal balls, what are the, what are the actions we're going to do, pretty much the way it is? What are stumbling blocks? Who do we have to suck up to? I'm the board supervisor. If we all like this, how do we get it done?
Well, that would be nice if you presented that at the, at the, at the Planning Commission and the board supervisors.
I'll do it.
There's energy now, and I, that's what I was trying to say, that a lot of times, we kind of, ah, you know, we finished this, we spent a lot of time, and I didn't get quite what I wanted, and that was it. That it would be better to move this thing along. There's a lot going out there, applications are coming forward, we really need to get this done, I think. And there's a lot of time spent on it, and I think we've, even John's issues, I think we have many of those handled. Not to criticize John.
They put a hold on that. Sorry, Lisa.
Wait, wait, no, let's hear it.
They put a hold on this specific site, planning amendments, the law?
The site-specific plans are awaiting this to go, but there are other ones that don't need a site-specific amendment.
I've been to the association one, Association Drive.
Yes, well, that one we'll have to wait. The comp stock is here, they're going on the end, at the end of June.
So, yeah, sorry, I deferred to Lisa, but I didn't give them any credit. In terms of community involvement, I think that, and correct me if I'm wrong, I think that it is most important for the community to make their voices heard to the Planning Commission, because once it's approved by the Planning Commission, it sounds like it's pretty much, there are many one chances for anything to change between the Planning Commission and the board supervisor, correct?
I think there are chances to change, and Walter Alcorn is all Wisconsin this now, and I believe there is a special meeting that Walter Alcorn is going to have towards the end of June, and I don't think it's quite scheduled yet, things probably go away from the Planning Commission. But no, many of these comments, I get them directly often, but some of them go directly to Supervisor Alcorn as well. So I wouldn't assume that whatever comes out of the Planning Commission is what goes with the board supervisors. We've been to the board supervisors twice, we've been to the Planning Commission twice, and they have different approaches, each body has a different approach to these things, so.
Which part?
I think they would appreciate it if we could sell it the world at the Planning Commission. I think they would like that, the board supervisors, but they have their own mind. Yes?
I heard you say that the Herndon Station is part of the Reston property.
Yes, it is, yes.
Then that Herndon was a town, and it has its own jurisdiction, it's how it comes, how is that going to help them?
Well, we deal with the areas outside of the.
Outside of the.
Yeah, right. And so in the case of the Herndon Metro Station, half of us in Reston and the other half is in the town of Herndon, so we didn't talk about the part that's in the town of Herndon, but we did talk about the areas that's, that's in Fairfax County.
Split.
Split them, and the metro, metro, total basically splits it. Yes?
I'm going to be out of the rest of the city, and say that this is going to be approved, and it is approved. Is that your end, in terms of democracy?
For now, yes, I would say absolutely, yes. But, you know, part of democracy is ever with us.
John, can you repeat the question?
The question was, if this is approved, does that put the, put an end to the discussion about the golf courses? And I said yes, so that's what the plan is going to recommend, and I don't think that's going to change at the Planning Commission or the board supervisors. But the price of democracy is ever with us. Yes?
I'm going to, I'm about to ask a question, the reason we're having a test, and this is our statement, but given this, given this schedule, what's objection for two or three hearings?
What is that?
Given, given this schedule, for these meetings?
Yes.
There's a very, very simple, you can, two or three.
Okay, the question is, what happens to all of these site-specific plan amendments? These are, there's 10 of them, most of them in Reston, and there's a famous one that's out of Reston, to Reston, that's been to the supervisors many times, but they're all in what's called a tier three, which means none of those will go forward until this plan is finished. Now- Now. Well, the plan, the staff could start in the fall. But there's 70 of these in the county. 70 of these site-specific plan amendments. So when we'll get to the rest of them, I don't have any idea yet.
You like your plan?
Yeah, that's another issue. The question becomes, what happens during an election year? Supervisors don't like to take things up, particularly on these things during election season. So I think there's no way that any of these can get before the elections. I just don't think. They're not going to start till the fall. There's no way that they're going to be finished by November. Yes?
The task force has done excellent job. The presentation has a lot of positive, good impact, positive impacts of what's been happening. What are you hearing in terms of those who are objective and what is being addressed?
Well, again, I'm answering this question. So the question is, what do I hear from others when they're reading the plan? What's the positive and negatives? I hear some. I hear things about, have we gone far enough in the health area? I don't hear a lot of comments about land use. I hear one or two comments in transportation. I think most of the meetings I go to, and maybe it's just me, I don't know. Most people say, hey, let's get on with this, let's get this approved. That's what I hear. That is, I mean, there aren't going to be things coming up. Association Drive, things that touch people where they live, those things are going to be coming up. And that's what the planning commission is there for, to resolve those. So, but what I hear is, hey, let's keep going. Yes?
Are we going to go to the chapter?
I think not, and I'm going to, I don't, if you want to, if you want to comment, sure, please.
We're all coming on help.
Yes. Michelle was concerned was, we originally was going to go through the chapter. There are chapter leads for each chapter and there were people involved in those in addition to the leads, both as subsets but also individually. And so Michelle wants to talk about the health chapter particularly.
Michelle, what's your last name, please?
Michelle Kimmel.
I can use the mic if that helps.
Sure.
So, you know, health is presented as a new chapter under new town, but it's not new to Reston. Health was part of the original Reston plan. Both directly when talking about specific healthcare facilities and also more indirectly we're talking about broad community health components that we've talked about from active living to gathering spaces. And in other ways, we are still moving forward to achieve the vision that was set out. But in a few very specific ways, this plan is lacking and actually sends us backwards. And there's one in particular that I just want to make sure everyone is aware of. The original plan for Reston had set aside land in Reston Town Center North for a voluntary inclusive medical center or hospital. And the word voluntary is very important because at the time, that term meant something. It meant that if you went there and you needed, you know, you needed healthcare and you couldn't afford it, you would still be treated. Now, today, we treat those as not-for-profit hospital systems. Our major not-for-profit providers, of course, Enova. But Reston Hospital is not a not-for-profit. Reston Hospital is a major for-profit entity owned by an HCA, which was one of the largest healthcare providers in the country. It's publicly traded and just Google it, you can read a lot of things. But it's important because right now, the way this plan is written, it incentivizes Enova to leave Reston. So Reston right now, we have, we were benefited because we have access to two providers. We have access to HCA through Reston Hospital. We also have Enova's standalone ER. So we can get emergency services there and then be part of the Enova system. That also makes it so a lot of our primary care physicians are incorporated here. There's a lot of benefits in having Enova here. Enova also owns that land. The land was set aside by the developers, then they sold it to the county or gifted it to the county, it appears, and then the county at one point sold it to Enova, all for the purposes of providing, again, that voluntary medical services. Right now, it's written in a way that Enova is given and granted all housing density. So what does that mean? It takes that land, which is currently used for healthcare services, and now all of a sudden increases the value immensely. Because now this is going to be demolished and turned into high-density housing. So when we lose that, we lose access to our major provider and we also lose that vision. Because the vision was always that everyone in Reston could get healthcare. And right now, that's not the case at Reston Hospital. If you cannot afford it, you will not get healthcare. You will be, you will be able to, if you go to the ER, you will certainly be stabilized, but you're not going to stick around for long. So this is a major issue. And so there is an answer and we've asked for just parity. We said, you know what? In this plan, we incentivize the ice skating rink, you guys know, over on Sunset Hills. We provide language in there that says that this is an important community facility and that it should stay there. And so we would like to see that same language used to describe the emergency room. And so, okay, Enova, we want to give the density to Enova, okay, but let's make sure that we also keep access to the Enova system and an ER there. So that's what we've asked. We've been told that, you know, this is impossible, apparently we can do it for an ice skating rink. So we have some issues with that and we think that should be addressed. Secondly, we have a major issue when we think about the Wewin Metro Station. Right now already, the metro area and neighborhood itself is not really a walking distance to a grocery store if you live right adjacent to the metro. We're about to get even worse because in case you didn't see, Whole Foods is moving. So if Whole Foods is gone, we have now a grocery desert. So what's the problem with a grocery desert? People are going to have to drive to get groceries. Now, on the Planning and Zoning Committee, we've heard everything from the people who are living there don't like grocery stores, they don't go to bars anyway. We've heard that they'll just have everything delivered. But there's studies that have been done that show that even deliveries, if they're done at times that are most convenient to the person ordering them, they do not limit car trips. So here again, we have a situation where now we're going to have a lot of people who can't walk to a grocery store, so they're going to have to drive. This both undercuts the vision of the pedestrian, it's their way and walkability. That was in the original plan. And it also undercuts the vision of a TSA, which is creating a transit station area where you don't have to drive. So again, we have, we have a solution that we think is pretty easy. It's parity again. We said, can we at least highlight the need for a grocery store here and say that, you know, if there's a grocery store, that ground level space or the space won't have to go towards the density calculations. We use this for educational facilities. We both live here, we see this as just as important. And again, we're told, no, we can't mention grocery stores. It's a fear for some reason of talking about affordable healthcare and talking about things as simple as grocery stores. So there are some very specific changes that could be made, but we have to know that we, you know, this comes down to unfortunately a little bit of politics, I guess, and, you know, real support for what is the vision, are we continuing with this vision? Do we want an area where everyone can live here and everyone can access healthcare? Do we want an area where you can walk to grocery stores? This is what it comes down to. But these are major things that will have a very big impact for a long time. Additionally, you know, in the original plan, it was really neat, I don't know why, but they mentioned kids a lot. And it's the importance of children and the importance of providing a really strong, safe and wonderful environment for kids. And we're lacking that a little bit in this one. And specifically, you know, we would like to see more effort put into place to make sure the kids can get to school safely. Especially if a lot of the development in the TSAs, there's not schools nearby. But we've got roads that are dangerous and we have issues throughout Reston. And so we push to have safe routes for schools to be a really strong component. Unfortunately, the language as it's written now just says that safe routes to schools will continue or continue coordination. We can't continue something you're not doing. So we've got to actually start it and we have to make sure that that's part of the development process. We brought it up on the Reston Planning and Planning Committee and they have no idea how are they going to get there, where are they going to go? We need to think about this because I'm pretty positive there's not a person in here who wants to see kids standing out on a busy road while trying to get a school bus and almost get it. But it happens. So those are some of the major issues. And, you know, I think that it was a wonderful presentation. It's a beautiful vision, but there are some very specific things and I hope everybody will really read it carefully. Because there are very key parts that we might not be hitting that vision that I think a lot of, a lot of you, I know I do, my neighbors, move to your four. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Michelle. So our time is running short. We're supposed to be around here at eight. I don't want to cut that off, Michelle, quite, but some of those things we can work on. I think the safe routes to schools, we have a notion from your school board member and we're going to add that, particularly along some of the major roads. Sunrise Valley and Sunset Hills. Getting across those is going to be, continue to be a challenge. So any of the schools that are close to that should be addressing that. The grocery stores, that's been back and forth in terms of the density. We don't know exactly and I imagine there's going to be more testimony about that. Enova does have 150,000 square feet of non-residential space in there. But there's no requirement, some would prefer. And the local health insurance, it does not address that. Okay. Those are not going away. So yes, Maura?
Can I ask a question? Can you go to your timeline and the last page?
So June 6th, we know it's coming out.
My question is about the, the staff put out their version for you guys.
Yes.
They have their 31 pages and they have the revised comp plan.
Yes.
And so if we had commented, like John does, about a certain part of the language that's missing, would the staff be revising it before it goes to you on the 14th? Or will that wait until the 14th and we make our comment? When might we receive or see a revision from staff at all in that process? That's what I was curious about.
Well, I'm sure the staff is thinking about this and we've been over many of these things with the staff even this week. So I think it's too much to expect a wholesale supply coming out on the 14th. But at the public hearing, everything that you send in will go in and the planning commission will put their recommendation on each one of these. So that's why I put, I don't know if that guy, I don't know, John, you can send it directly to me or you could send it to the planning commission. But I don't think, you know, that's too much to expect wholesale changes on the 14th. But the staff is thinking and collecting these. We're not waiting to try to address the bulk of these issues. Is that fair, Chris?
Yeah.
Yeah. So yes? Jennifer?
I'm sorry, I thought we were all going, the chapter leads were sending email saying we're going to have an opportunity to speak, so that's why I became prepared to actually speak. In addition to some of the points that Michelle brought to your attention, I wanted to bring to your attention a couple additional ones. Somewhere in the parks and open space, John Farrell mentioned some of them in the beginning. Wanted to point out that in the McLean area plan, there's something called a Tyson's partnership, where the citizens actually have a voice in what parks and open space will look like in the future of McLean. And the chapter of this plan really speaks to FCPA having that voice. And they speak to, they have their master planning process that they go through. But the parks in Reston are the parks that we all pay for. We pay for them through Reston Association. Something like, was it 92% of the open space parks and rec facilities are owned and operated by Reston Association and they're paid for, I imagine, by all of us in this room. So if we are not involved in the voice of the future of those parks, recs and open space, then it's all about the proper money that's coming into the TSA and that proper money will be controlled by FCPA. And we really should be demanding our own voice in that. Whether it's through an individual Tyson, like that Tyson's has a partnership or giving RA at least that voice because we have a voice through that system. So I would encourage you guys to advocate for that. The staff report also has a recommendation about putting in naming parks that are outside of the Reston area plan, like Lake Fairfax Park. Those are outside of the planned reason. I believe they're being added to the plan is because that proper money can then go to those parks. That money should really be coming from Fairfax County. Our tax dollars goes towards that, not the local Reston money that is coming into the local Reston fund. So I would encourage you guys to advocate for not only a voice, but a voice in where the money, the proper money that's coming in actually goes. Because it has definitely gone in the past to private entities and we should be advocating for that in Reston, especially since it's really owned and funded by all of us already anyway. There was one more. Oh, I also would encourage you guys to look at the language on the south side of the metro. That, what is a property right now that Comstock owns. And there's not a ton of language on what that access looks like. But I would call it the heart of access from the south side of Reston to that metro station. And I would say that we should be pretty specific on what we're looking for. Do you like the kiss and ride on the north side that has been created? Do you like taking your family there? You know, have we learned any lessons from what we created on the north side? Because we need to be specific on the south side of what that looks like. And think about your current access. You currently walk through a parking lot to get there. We'd love to see that be like a gathering space and open space, a trail that gets us there. Comstock, as John said, is coming up and they currently have a hotel standing right in the front of the metro. So pay attention to the language, I would say, in that section especially because it will affect all of us. Thank you.
Those are all good comments. It may be possible, we have what's called follow-on motions at the planning commission and at the board of supervisors, so these new task forces, that might be a possibility for follow-on motions as well as putting them in the plan. But I wanted to give all of the chapter leads a chance to say whatever you might want to say. Bill?
So I worked with Tim Train on the chapter dealing with environmental stewardship. And in light of climate change, in light of county's stated goal of getting to net zero carbon emissions, greenhouse gas emissions by 2040 and the CPAC report that came out so recently, we took it seriously and worked hard to try and come up with a built-in environment, standards for new construction in the TSAs, which is where the greatest opportunity is, to increase the requirements for energy efficiency, strongly encourage other ones of clean energy, prepare the properties for EV charging, all of which is important because buildings and vehicles constitute almost 80% of the emissions. emissions in Fairfax County. So it was serious, and the attempt was to get something done. The proposals we made were all the sorts of things that DOJ recommends, that EPA recommends, nothing radical, nothing crazy, but stronger than what's in the current plan. Apparently, I thought we were having good work with the staff on it, but apparently some decision was made, perhaps at board supervisors' level, it's ambiguous to me, that really nothing new should be introduced here. It should await some future county-wide process at an unstated day. And I think that's a real problem. The one point of leverage the county has is in rezonings, where the law permits, they kind of to get offers for different building code standards than the general building code standard, which I can tell you from three years of work, I'm trying to update Virginia's building codes are behind the nationally recognized standards as is. So we, we put in a good proposal, it got completely diminished. That's the nicest word I can use. And a list of ideas, which was mostly in the existing plan, was put in and said, this is encouraged, which is what the last plan said. And those ideas were almost entirely disregarded by developers, of course, of developers. So I, I think this is an area where the county needs to revisit in this plan, not in some future plan. Oh, sperm water management. We agree with the staff, first inch rain ought to be held on site to the extent possible, and that the outflow should be reduced by some percentage. We proposed what McLean asked, which is a 10-year, what, 40% reduction of outflow compared to current conditions in a 10-year storm, which with climate change, it happens a lot more often than 10 years. But again, apparently told not to do anything new, they stuck with a two-year standard. So the two-year storm is guiding, so weaker than the plan. In any event, our children are dealing with this, frankly, it's a business thing. If we have well-built buildings in an area that has the economic capability of affording them, we will attract more businesses, more residents, and the people who live in those buildings will have lower utility costs, and they'll be more affordable. So I do hope this one gets revisited. And any encouragement you can give them would be great.
So, so are there any other chapter leads? I, I meant to start out with the chapter leads, but I was remiss on that. Yes, Lynn?
I, I just want to thank, if you all understand the, so I was the chapter lead for land use, and I want to thank folks that are many in this room, Tammy Patraine, Jennifer Justcheck, Michelle Kimmel, Dennis Hayes, who is not here, and Gary Monken, who is not here. We worked for three years to rewrite and restructure, well, not rewrite, because a lot of it is, is carried over from the previous plan. But all of these folks spent three years of their lives volunteering to, to bring this plan to life and the chapter for land use. We also picked up the Parks Recreation Open Space, and I, I agree with Jennifer's comments about the importance of including Reston Association in Parks Rec and Open Space. But I do want to thank staff for acknowledging the fact that this community is dedicated to the open space golf courses. And we do feel that it is very important to ensure that the community does have the 12 full-size or full-use athletic fields. But I, I really want to thank everybody for the contribution of time. It's, it's really been a journey. And Commissioner Carter has been incredible.
Any other chapter leads? Okay, I, I'd like to end these a little differently. So everybody gets one word to explain the plan, starting with Tammy Patraine. One word.
It's going to be a phrase that could be improved by having a table.
Okay, does anybody want to raise their hand before I start calling on people? John? One word?
Me?
Me?
No, no, you asked me, me?
Let's see, somebody's got to raise their, here we go. You can have two words.
The future.
The future. There you go, you were staring at me, so that's okay. But you want to ask a question? Okay, I can do that, too.
Your comments on the fellowship.
Yes.
I'm with electricians, we would like, all of our members have paid for their healthcare. We have 11,000 members. We spend $14 million of our own money and our contracts paying to fund the training. And the other way we could do construction is, is a task, is to take the economy and pay it to the table. Not the other way, there's good non-union marriage jobs, but there's a, where I said with the economy and take the economy, where people have no power to pay on that table, we need independent contractors. The developers have to know that they should use contractors that have healthcare for their folks. And the people, the children in Reston can live here and in their families' homes. Our members make $54 now, but $30 in benefits. That is the system that we have in place. We dominate the construction market in this area. We have 60%, 40% of it is, and we're not talking single-family homes or individual electricians, I'm talking commercial work and industrial work. So there's another way to build your community so that you have healthcare, so that you can live where you were raised, and that's effective to me, my friend. Otherwise, it's a very great plan, and I've always admired Russian's role in that.
Somebody likes the plan. Come on, folks, we want to end this on a positive note. Lynn?
More graphics.
More graphics. Who else? There's a lot of silence out there. Come on, folks, come on, this is your life coming up. Okay, we, it's past eight o'clock time, so we probably ought to end this. So welcome to the next round. This is the beginning of the end, I think. So June 14th is the next time we will gather to speak. Yes?
Do you know if the committee, the hearing will be televised?
Yes.
If, if you want to, all that information's in Supervisor Alcorn's newsletter, so you can watch it on demand or live stream or whatever.